Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the City Commission meeting this October 3rd, 2023. We appreciate your patience in the beginning of this meeting. For those of you who are here for the first time, welcome. And just to let you know a little bit about how we begin our meetings, we start out with the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence, and there are certain announcements at the beginning. And then we often have presentations. Those presentations are an opportunity for the community to recognize individuals, groups, or organizations that are important for this particular month or moment in time. And we have two of those presentations tonight, and we'll get to those shortly. So if I can ask you all to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you so much. Please join me in a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst. Commissioner Glassman.
Here.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman.
Here.
Commissioner Sturman.
Here.
Mayor Trentalas.
Here. We have two agenda announcements. CR-8, the CAM was revised to correct the submission deadline for nominations. R4, the CAM was revised to correct the title of Exhibit 3. With regard to the minutes in the agenda, do we have a motion to approve the minutes and the agenda?
Second.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman.
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman.
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst.
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman.
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas.
Yes, and the minutes in the agenda are now approved. Our first presentation, I'd like to invite our Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman to present a proclamation recognizing Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Fort Lauderdale. And while the Vice Mayor is walking up to the podium, I'd please invite Angelique Mercer from the American Cancer Society and Ariel Jones from Muscle Mom Fitness to join the Vice Mayor at the podium for the presentation. Did I pronounce Angelique correctly?
You did.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Hi.
Hi.
How y'all doing? This is such an honor for me. Breast cancer awareness is really dear to my heart, and I'm really excited that I have this opportunity to present these proclamations this evening. The Office of the Mayor, the City of Fort Lauderdale Proclamation in recognition of Breast Cancer Awareness Month 2023. Whereas in 1985, the American Cancer Society designated October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, the purpose was to provide information and empower women to play an active role in their breast health. Whereas, one in eight women will be diagnosed with breast cancer during their lifetime. For men, the risk is one in 833. Breast cancer is responsible for the death of more than 43,000 women and 530 men annually. Their stories, hardships, and determination inspires us in a fight to eradicate this disease. Breast cancer also affects the loved ones of those who are suffering with the disease, be it a wife, a mother, a family member, or a friend. And whereas, in this month, the City of Fort Lauderdale encourages everyone to make special efforts to recognize breast cancer survivors, honoring the member of those that were lost to this disease and continue working together to promote early detection, treatment, and prevention. And whereas, the city takes proactive measures in making early detections accessibility to its employees by offering screenings in Boca Raton Regional Hospital memo van at the various cities' facilities throughout the year. And this year, the city recognizes both the American Cancer Society's Making Strides for Breast Cancer and Muscle Moms Fitness Pedal and Pink for their significant contributions in the battle against breast cancer. And whereas, for more than three decades, the Making Strives Against Cancer Campaign, organized by the American Cancer Society, has united communities, companies, and individuals, becoming the nation's largest and most impactful breast cancer movement. This movement raises much-needed funds, supporting survivors, thrivers, and caregivers. Making Strives is the nation's largest breast cancer event, underscoring its immense significance. And whereas, Ariel Jones, founder of the Muscle Moms Fitness, empowers women by promoting strength, health, and self-confidence. In 2020, she established Pedal and Pink, an annual 12-mile, annual, listen to this, you all, annual 12-mile bike ride, uniting participants in a vibrant pink attire and bikes, symbolizing hope and unity in the breast cancer fight. This event honors survivors and pays tribute to the many lives lost and showcase how to unite communities can make a remarkable impact in supporting those affected by the disease. And whereas, the City of Fort Lauderdale thanks its neighbors, community partners, and employees for their commitment to working together to raise awareness and support research to help find a cure. Now, therefore, we ask the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale to hereby proclaim October 2023 Breast Cancer Awareness and in the City of Fort Lauderdale and encourage all citizens to put forth an effort to raise awareness about breast cancer education and the importance of early detection and prevention, dated this 3rd day of October 2023, by our Mayor Dean Trentalas. And we're gonna allow the ladies to make a speech if they would like.
Thank you so much. Good evening, City of Fort Lauderdale Commission, as well as residents. My name's Angelique. I am the Senior Development Manager for American Cancer Society's Making Strives Against Breast Cancer Movement in Broward County. It's a mouthful, but it's worth it. Remember it. I could not have said it better myself. This is the number-one breast cancer movement in the nation, supporting breast cancer research in over 150 cities throughout the nation. I am proud to announce that Broward County is the number-one breast cancer movement in Broward County, you know, compared to the person who shall not be named. And we were ranked number eight nationally. Last year, we were able to have 20,000 participants at our event and raised over $829,000 for the cause. We are a volunteer-led, staff-supported organization. There's one of me for every 3,000 of you. So I'm very happy to accept this proclamation and to thank all of you for all the amazing work you're doing, fundraising, and raising awareness about this terrible disease. Thank you.
Greetings, everyone. My name is Ariel Jones. I am the founder of Muscle Mom Fitness and also the organizer for Pedo and Pink. I'm not a woman of many words, so I would just invite you guys out to Pedo and Pink we are having this year, once again, in the City of Fort Lauderdale on November 5th at Smitty's Wings. So I invite you guys to join us, donate, help us with this fight, and that's pretty much it.
Thank you. Before you go, I just want to say one quick word. I'm glad that I'm the next speaker, anyway, but as a physician, I want to thank you. And I did lose my sister, Randy Sturman, to cancer, so I thank you very much. Encourage everybody, screenings, mammograms, ultrasounds. Just be vigilant. Thank you all for everything you do with that. Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Sturman, while you're up there, please, you, please provide the next presentation in which you will be presenting a proclamation regarding Fire Prevention Week in the City of Fort Lauderdale. Commissioner Sturman.
My buds. Guys, come on up here. Thank you. Chief, read a quick proclamation. In recognition of Fire Prevention Week, October 8th through 14th, 2023, whereas, the City of Fort Lauderdale Whereas, the City of Fort Lauderdale is committed to safeguarding the lives and property of all residents and visitors. Fire is a serious threat to public safety, locally and nationally, and our homes are where we face the greatest risk of harm. And whereas, in 2021, the National Fire Protection Association reported that local fire departments responded to an estimated 1.3 million fires nationwide. Whereas, Fort Lauderdale Fire Rescue employees are dedicated to reducing the frequency of residential fires and its devastating outcomes through fire prevention and prevent, and education. Whereas, the 2023 Fire Protection Week theme, Cooking Safety Starts With You, Pay Attention to Fire Protection, effectively serves to remind us to stay awake, alert, and use caution when cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fires. And whereas, between 2016 and 2020, cooking-related accidents were the cause of 40% of all residential fires in the United States. And whereas, safe cooking practices should include turning pot handles toward the back of the stove, always keeping a lid nearby, maintaining a threshold of three-feet kid-free zone around sources of heat, and setting timers as a reminder to remove food from cooking appliances. And whereas, the City of Fort Lauderdale encourages everyone to have a working smoke alarms, which should be tested regularly, and create and practice fire escape plans. These precautionary measures can significantly reduce the risk and likelihood of injury and serious property damage in the event of fire. Now, therefore, we, a City Commission and the City of Fort Lauderdale, do hereby proclaim the week of October 4th, excuse me, the week of October 8th through the 14th, Fire Protection Week in the city of Fort Lauderdale, and urge everyone to implement and practice home fire safety in support of public safety efforts of the Fort Lauderdale Fire Department. Signed, Understate Mayor Dean Trentalas.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners. Um, since 1922, the NFPA has sponsored the public observance of the Fire Prevention Week. In 1925, President Coolidge proclaimed Fire Prevention Week as a national observance, making it the longest-running public health observance in our country. Fire Prevention Week is observed each year during the week of October 9th in commemoration of the Great Chicago Fire, which began on October 8, 1871. Those are a long time ago, right? And it caused devastating damage. This horrific conflagration killed more than 250 people, left 100,000 homeless, and destroyed more than 17,400 structures, and burned more than 2,000 acres of land. It reminds me today of Maui, so what they were going through. So this year's theme, though, is Cooking Safety Starts With You. As it said in the proclamation, unattended cooking fires are the leading cause of home fires in America. We should all try harder to reduce our home fires and the injuries that result from cooking. So thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. O'Leary's cow, remember that? Okay, very good. Thank you, Commissioner. And thank you, thank you to all of our public safety personnel and our firefighters, as well as our police department for keeping us safe and, and in recognition of Fire Prevention Week next week. So we'll now move on with the rest, rest of our agenda. You okay? All right. Um, so the first part of the, the agenda that we will now be addressing is what's called the Consent Agenda. At this time, the Commission will be asked to vote on all these items all at once as they are consent items. Each member of the Commission will be asked if they'd like to pull one of the consent items to, for us to consider separately and vote on it separately. So I will ask each member of the Commission if there's an item they wish to pull. If you've asked to speak on an item and that item has not been pulled, I will invite you to speak before we begin the voting, and you're welcome to speak on that issue. Okay. Patrick on the Florida Jet Center, did you just want to, where's Patrick? You just wanted, did you, was there something, you want to support the item or not support the item? Just have questions, right? Okay, fine. Okay. So with regard to the Consent Agenda, Commissioner Herbst, do you have any items you wish to pull?
None.
Vice Mayor?
None.
Commissioner Glassman?
CP one, of course.
CP one, and Commissioner Sturman?
None.
Okay, except for CP one, do I hear a motion to approve all the Consent Agenda items?
Motion, move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, except for CP one, uh, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and all the Consent Agenda items are now approved. If you're here on those Consent Agenda items, you're, you're now welcome to leave, or you can stay and, and participate in the rest of the meeting. Uh, CP one, Commissioner.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, so this was a discussion we had last night at my pre-agenda meeting, so basically, I just wanted to mention a few things for our city manager and staff. There is a general concern on the Barrier Island when it comes to, um, events, and with regards to this parking lot, it's not that, um, we're opposed to the improvements for the parking lot. In fact, we see why it's necessary. But there was some concern, wondering why some of the larger events such as Tortuga perhaps couldn't even contribute to these improvements in this parking lot, being that most of these improvements in this parking lot are for our large events, uh, because of the truck ingress and egress, because of the utility hookups. So there was a general consensus that gee, maybe they could contribute, um, or at least if we look in the future at raising fees, that that could go for something like that in the future. There was also a concern, uh, many times when the, um, parking lot is closed, uh, there's really nowhere for the public to walk. We find that many times on the Barrier Island, in particular in this part of the beach, that, um, maybe if we had some sort of sidewalk or some sort of accessibility on the west side of that parking lot, um, because it really is very difficult for the public, um, to find a safe way to walk, uh, and to, uh, basically traverse Seabreeze Boulevard, A1A at that point. But those were the concerns that came up. Uh, again, having nowhere really to walk, um, and then also under construction, that's happening in that area a lot now, and even in the future, that'll be happening a lot more. And also, again, with regards to, um, the possibility of having some of these larger events actually help us with the costs, being that they are the ones that are benefiting from the changes.
So, Commissioner, to address your concerns about Tortuga, um, they have a, uh, multi-year contract, and as soon as, uh, we renew the next contract, we certainly will factor in, um, maintenance, um, charges that can help make, make sure that parking lot remains, um, in a pristine manner. And about the sidewalk, we will do our best to, when planning, uh, these types of events, to make sure that there's a sidewalk for pedestrian access. And as you know, there's construction activity there, and we'll, we'll manage as best as possible. The good thing is that we have good partners, um, Bahia Mar are good partners, and they do their best to accommodate, so we'll continue doing that as well.
Okay, thank you very much. And with that, I'm, I'm okay to move the item forward, Mayor.
Do I hear a second?
Yes.
Yes.
It moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and CP one is approved. M one, a motion approving an event agreement and related road closures for Uptown 5K on the runway, Friday dining in the streets, and mass district events Q four and Nobi Sunday, Sunday Block Party. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
My apology, but also city manager, I forgot on that last item. If we could also get a timeline, if you could send our office a timeline for those phases of one and two, uh, on that parking lot improvement program from the last item, I forgot to mention that when we just discussed that. We'd just like to know what that timeline is.
Will do.
Thank you.
Yes. And Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and M one's now approved. M two, motion approving an event agreement and request for extended road closures beyond 10 a.m. on the Barrier Island for the 17th Annual 13.1 Fort Lauderdale Half Marathon and the A1A 10K. Someone like to make a motion?
So moved.
Move to approve?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second?
Second.
It moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes, but I also want to add, uh, that I've had a request, and I've shared it with the city manager, that we do a better job of informing the other residents out on the Barrier Island of when these events are taking place, because a lot of them get stuck in traffic, that they weren't anticipating. So I know I've shared that with you, Greg. I just wanted to get on the record with that. Thank you.
Will do.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and that item is now approved. M three, motion approving event agreements, related road closures, and request for music exemption, uh, for food in motion, Christmas on La Solis, and the Mods Gala. Someone like to make a motion?
Motion.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded. All right, please call the roll.
Mayor, before we vote, are we allowed to just ask a question, or?
No.
Raise, raise a, raise a concern.
Yes, raise whatever you want.
All right, no, I appreciate that. Um, no, it was brought to my attention with regards to the, uh, food in motion. I know that we're looking at an additional hour, uh, for the sound, um, but, um, I know that the, the trucks have to stop serving, um, but will they be, um, will they have to stop before the sound? Or in other words, uh, you know, with the food trucks, uh, will they go past 11:00 as well, or will they have to stop at 11:00?
Good evening. Uh, Chris Gadre from Atlantic Studios and Strictly Local on record there. Um, so the, the idea is that we give people a little bit longer, because it tends to be a late crowd at Food in Motion. Food in Motion's commenced over 80 times at Feldman Park, and we always ran it until 11:00 p.m. and got the variants, because people tend to stay later and enjoy it. We don't have any loud, thrashing music. It's pretty much recorded, calm stuff, and we are trying to fi, figure out a way to kind of backstop the gazebo in Esplanon, so we don't have reflection back over the water. But the idea was if we could go to 11:00 with the music and the food service, it'd be fantastic, because people really, last time around, they really want to stay longer than 10:00 p.m.
But what about the road closure? I mean, that seems to have been brought to my attention, that that sometimes isn't a concern in terms of getting that road back open. Do you see any issue with that?
No, sir. Um, as a matter of fact, last time, we, we usually have the closure in excess of what we actually need, just in case there's additional cleanup or something we didn't anticipate. As a matter of fact, last time, the closure was good until 2:00 a.m. We were out of there by, I think, 11 minutes after midnight. So it's always going to be our aim to be out of there at midnight or just before. It's, it's pretty well, well machined as far as cleaning up and getting out of there on time.
Okay, great. Um, because I, I think, do the trucks themselves stop serving the food at 11:00?
Right. Well, typically, they'd stop a little bit earlier than that, so that they're pretty much ready to roll 11:00 p.m. They're on their way off the street.
Okay.
And then we, we even begin cleanup quite, quite a bit earlier than that. You know, there's cleanup consistently throughout the event, but the major push starts somewhere around 10:00 p.m. In this case, if we were going to 11:00, we'd have that hour to get everything kind of a head start. And then as the trucks roll out, it's maybe another 30 to 45 minutes and the roads reopened.
Okay, great. No, thank you for that, and thank you for that cooperation.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? There being none, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and that motion is now approved. See you at Christmas. M four, motion approving an application for temporary beach license, outdoor event agreement, and extended road closures for the Florida AIDS Walk and musical fest, and music festival. Do I hear a motion?
Motion, move.
It's been moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It moved and seconded. Um, any questions? If none, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and that item is now approved. M five, motion approving agreement for the South Ocean Drive Bridge Replacement Project, interstate construction, $4,241,580.31. Someone like to move the item?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second, but I do have a question.
And I have a, a lot of comments about this. Yeah, I know. We're getting to that. I figured you did.
We know how you like to rush.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Commissioner Sturman? Oh, thank you. Well, it's in your district, right? Right. I do appreciate that. We've had a lot of, um, if I could have Ben come, come forward. We've had a lot of discussion about this in my district, Harbor Beach and Harbor Inlet, mainly Harbor Inlet, much more so. We, um, I understand that there's a time issue on this. My gut reaction was to pull this until we could go back to the neighborhood again and vet some of their issues here. We've talked about this, uh, several times. In fact, we had a conference between myself, Ben, the city manager, and the president, and some of the, uh, members of Harbor Inlet of their concerns. Could you, now, we discussed it, but for the community, could you, uh, just for the record, why this is a, a time, uh, time-sensitive issue, just to go over what we discussed yesterday?
Yeah, absolutely. Ben Rogers, Director of Transportation Mobility. So, uh, to address your, your comments, Commissioner Sturman, there's really two issues of time sensitivity. The first one is, um, the Broward County Surtax is one of the funding sources for this. Um, over the last couple of years, we've worked through the Surtax proj, process, um, and most recently, we asked for some inflationary, uh, dollars to combat some of the construction costs. And that, uh, document has been memorialized, and it has some deliverables and key dates that we need to meet. Uh, because there have been substantial delays, it leads to the second timeliness issue is just the condition of the bridge. Um, so the bridge is in, in poor condition, um, and I believe that FDOT had another, uh, survey of the bridge recently, and we should be getting the findings of that shortly. So, uh, with those two issues, I would, I would, uh, encourage the Commission to, to move this.
Just to rehash and to summarize some of the issues that we had discussed also, and for the benefit of the community or everybody that's watching out there, uh, some of, one of the proposals was to keep one of the lanes open and just work on one at a time. And I, uh, as you've summarized, there's three issues with that. Number one, uh, if you do it that way, the time would be a lot longer. The, the inconvenience would, would be significantly increased. Greg, we spoke about the cost. The cost would be much higher. And the third, possibly most important thing is if they had to accommodate traffic while they're fixing it, the end product might not be as structurally sound. You know, you're not going to get as good of a result. Is that, uh, a summary of what we had discussed, Ben?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, the neighborhood is resolved that they do have to have a full closure at this particular point. And for the record, there's some things that we had discussed, uh, several times, and most recently last night, and I just, I'm not going to do this as an addendum, because I don't want to delay us getting funded, but I do go, want to go on the record, some of the things that we had discussed that we are going to incorporate, uh, in the, in the, in the execution of this motion. Number one, um, we need to have a neighborhood input, and I think as soon as this is done, and we, the vendor started, I want to have, uh, with the neighborhoods involved, particularly Harbor Inlet, uh, with ourselves, transportation, city manager, Public Works, as well as the, uh, the vendor that's going to be doing it. Number two, this is critical. We need to come up with a plan that, that's, uh, as far as EMS and first responders getting there back and forth. There's a roundabout there that's, that might be difficult to navigate. We need to mitigate issues, and I see the fire chief is over here, too. So we're going to loop you in at that point, making sure whatever we do, um, fire, uh, and police and EMS, uh, their access is not limited. Number three, um, same thing for deliveries, you know, but obviously EMS is a priority, but they're going to, same issue with delivery, uh, deliveries. The other thing that we had discussed is trying to avoid initiation of this until after the peak holiday season. This will impact, um, uh, transportation significantly. You're going to be having everybody on that Barrier Island funnel through one entrance. Their backup entrance is going to be, uh, closed for extended period of time. And with addition of holiday traffic, it's going to be adding insult to injury. So, uh, we had discussed, uh, with the best we could do, trying to avoid start date until after the holiday season. And the last, and probably one of the biggest things of all, um, there's some issues with, uh, the neighboring project, Pier 66, with parking, and a lot of their workers are parking in Harbor Inlet in the area there. The parking overflow is at the beginning or end of their day. They're all going to be leaving, and if all the neighbors in Harbor Inlet are going to have to go back and forth to the doctor, grocery, get pharmacy, school, um, having to fight with, uh, some of the workers, construction, whatnot, uh, is going to be a disaster. So, uh, we want to have a plan implementing with fire, not fire, with police and traffic to prioritize, uh, the traffic flow for the people who live there, have to go back and forth, again, doctors, schoolwork, and whatnot. So whatever traffic pattern we have, they're being extremely inconvenienced and put at risk. traffic pattern we have, they're being extremely inconvenienced and put at risk. To mitigate that, as best we can, to give priority to, uh, the neighborhoods, uh, having to go back and forth to work. And that's, that's the summary of what we had discussed yesterday. Is that correct?
That's correct, and just a couple of points. On the timeliness, absolutely, we'll try to accommodate as much as we can. The Surtax, uh, agreement does have certain key dates that we would either need to follow or go back to the county and see if we can get extensions. But more importantly, I think, uh, it's going to come down to the F-I-FDOT study, uh, and find out what the status of the bridge is. There might be a point in time where it is not feasible to keep the bridge open, even if we wanted to. Um, so that will be a, a key predicate on next steps. Uh, agree 100% that once we get the contractor on board, um, we can set up a meeting to talk through the, the timelines and expectations. Uh, there was a study done in the past that evaluated the turning movements around the, the roundabouts for a fire EMS. I've had some conversations with Chief Gollan as well. Um, so I think that, uh, is mitigated. Um, and then for Pier 66, I actually spoke with him this morning, uh, as we, uh, had our discussion last night. Um, one of the things that they were waiting for is the boat show. So once the boat show, um, is, is over with, they will be starting the roadwork, uh, in that area. Um, they expect that will take about three to four months to complete, and that will clear out a lot of the conflict points. Um, so right now, I, I think that we're, I don't want to say a clear path on mitigating all of the obstacles, um, but I do think that we, uh, we've had some substantial progress, and we'll continue to work with the, uh, the neighborhoods.
Ben, Greg, thank you both. Renee from my office, want to wave, Renee? She will coordinate the, the meeting with the neighborhood with her staff. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Ben, do, don't go away. Uh, do you know when the construction start date was anticipated? My only concern about delaying it is every time you wait a year, it's another half a million dollars, and I'm just hoping to avoid that. What, what is the construction start date?
I think we're looking, uh, and this is Public Works, so I'd have to defer to their project management team, but the last I knew that the project was scheduled to start, uh, end of December, beginning of January.
This year?
Of this year, yes.
Oh, perfect. Okay. Well, try acting more like-
We figured, they, they said, uh, begin, they had said January, and we figured, okay, by the time the ink dries, it'll be February, March, so that'll, uh-
Well, why don't we assign the project to FDOT, so that way it'll happen next June? Okay. Commissioner Glassman, do you have any comments?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, actually, I'd like to, uh, ask Alan Don a, a question, because, um, not particularly, I'm, I'm definitely in favor of this, uh, agenda item, but I, I really want to know what our master plan is in terms of bridges throughout our city. I mean, I know I have several in my district, uh, as well, but I, I just want to know what our plan is to address the infrastructure, and if we're able to tap into any kind of resources, whether it be state or federal, through the infrastructure bills that have been passed, but I know that this is a pressing issue. What is exactly our timeline to deal with all of this?
Okay. Uh, Mayor and Commissioners, uh, we did a bridge master plan in 2014, which, which is a little outdated now, but still has a lot of the basic facts that we need, that identified in five-year, 10-year, 15-year, 20-year tranches, what we need to be looking at for repairs or for replacement on it. Uh, South Ocean Drive Bridge was one of two bridges that were identified that needed to be replaced in the first five-year tranche, and we're a little bit behind on that, but at least we're going to move on this project. Uh, what we're doing is using those priorities, and if you go in the CIP, we've listed a number of projects that are funded this year for us to be working on. We are working with, uh, LAPD funding, which is through the state, to help to augment us on doing, uh, repairs or replacement of bridges. And, and we're trying to follow the priorities set in the, the bridge master plan.
Okay, so do you think that, I heard you say five, 10, 15, 20. Do you think within 20 years, all of the bridges that need attention will receive them?
No, I don't. I, I think that we are behind already, and that we have work to catch up on them, and that the bridges will continue declining, but it at least gives us the road path. As we are able to get more funding for bridges, or we're able to get more funding from grants from either the state or other sources, we can accelerate those in that priority listing.
So, we do read about, um, many roads and bridges and other infrastructure that are getting addressed through the, you know, infrastructure bill that came out of Washington. Are we applying for any of these funds? Are we able to tap into any of these monies that are being made available through all of this with regards to that infrastructure bill?
Commissioner, right now, I'm not of, aware of any, uh, grant opportunities or things to apply for. We're, we're watching it very closely. We talked to Daphne about grant opportunities, but, uh, right now, I'm not aware of anything that we can directly apply for to support the bridge program.
Okay, I'm just curious about that, Mayor, because we do hear from, uh, you know, around the country, different, um, bridges and roads.
Well, well, to answer your question, um, let's not ask Alan at this point, or to respond to that, because there is infrastructure money for these types of projects, provided that they're at a certain stage of development. They have to be shovel-ready. They have to have certain, uh, basic criteria, and I think that we should be able to get a response from our, our, our advocates in Washington to perhaps come here, or at least, um, present some kind of, uh, uh, document from which we can read and, and determine what, what programs can be made available to us to help, help us move us, uh, forward in infrastructure repair and replacement. So, um, Alan's not going to be able to respond to you right now, but our, but our representatives in Washington should be able to, uh, give us a more comprehensive answer.
No, I think that's important, because, and I'd like to see that happen, because, you know, with regards to items like bridges, I don't know, shovel-ready, the only way you might need a shovel is to pick up the pieces if the bridge collapses. But, so I don't know how your bridge is going to be shovel-ready, but I mean, it's obvious that if a bridge needs repair.
It's just, it's just an expression.
No, I understand, but if a bridge needs repair, a bridge needs repair. So, I'd just like to see us address it. Thank you, though.
Okay, Daphne, did you want to add to this?
Mayor, I did want to say that as far as the funding, it really, it goes to the state, and then the state is the one that does it. And that's why the LAPD funding is the main program that we are getting money from. But I'm not aware of anything directly from the federal government that we can apply for.
So, Alan is correct. The, the federal infrastructure money has now been, uh, designed to go through the state, and then we have to apply through the state. But that's, so when we get money from the state, it's really from the federal government.
No, I understand. And, and we are doing that through the state?
Again, all I know is that there are programs available. Whether or not they're doing it, I don't know the answer to your question. Um, but I do think that we have lobbyists that we've been working with, who have been helping direct us to those appropriate programs and how to apply for them. Daphne, do you want to chime in on this?
Yes, Daphne Seinville, Public Affairs Manager. Um, we have Susan Lent with Ekin Gump on the federal level that has been sending us grant opportunities for various infrastructure, um, programs, and I do funnel that out to, uh, the department directors when they become available. I know some of that funding does trickle down to the state, where we don't get it directly, but some of them we do get directly. It just depends on the amount of money, um, that we're asking for, or the amount of paperwork we're willing to go through. But I can also get her to, um, come down and do a-
She lives down here.
She, oh, that's right.
She lives down here. So, I think that we should be able to get her to come here and give us, uh, give us some kind of report, because, hey, in the last two years, I've visited the U.S. Department of Transportation at least a half a dozen times, and, uh, they have indicated to us through the, our conversations, that this type of funding is available to help support projects such as this. That's, that's how it's been designed. Um, you know, we don't, not every community wants to rebuild the George Washington Bridge. There are small bridges like this and medium-sized bridges that infrastructure money is available.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mayor, I was just going to say that I believe a, a notice of funding opportunity came out last week, actually, for bridges. So I think that we have about a 45 to 60-day window to put a package together.
Okay, great.
Excellent. So we can look at that Suspirro Bridge with the La Solis Mobility Working Group. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, so I think we want your vote. Is, are we still on the vote?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Oh, no, 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 wait, wait, wait. Before we, um, I said there's a representative from Travis Dock, uh, Mrs. Toothaker. If, I, I didn't mean to call you off guard, but while you're here, you don't mind coming up front? This is going to be one of the easiest questions of your night. It's just a yes/no question.
Good evening, Commissioner.
Very easy. Um, you're willing to take part in the conversation, traffic conversation, I would hope, correct?
Yes, of course.
Okay.
Yes, we actually had a call this morning, um, uh, Travis Dock, myself and Ben Rogers, to get on a call, to have that, have that discussion.
And I'll loop in with the neighborhood, if that's okay.
We've, we've been communicating with the neighborhood, yes, constantly. Yes, and we will continue to do so, of course.
Thank you, as always.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentos?
Yes, um, and that motion is now approved. Uh, M6, uh, motion approving proprietary purchases for water distribution, wastewater collection, and stormwater system infrastructure and treatment facilities. Um, do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded, moved and seconded. Does anyone have any questions? If none, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentos?
Yes, and M6 is now approved. M7, motion authorizing the appropriate city official or staff to negotiate a contract of employment as city attorney with the candidate selected by the city commission. Mr. Spence?
Uh, so, Commissioner, um, Mayor, what the commission will do at this time is determine which one of the candidates, uh, you would like to commence negotiations for the role of city attorney with, and also, um, designate if you, if you think appropriate, uh, individual from, uh, city staff or, or amongst yourselves to negotiate that contract with the candidate. It is my understanding that there is one candidate that remains, um, and so, uh, you can entertain a motion.
Mr. Ansbro? Mr. Ansbro?
Yes, that's correct.
You're in the audience. Now, there he is. Um, okay, so the one remaining candidate is Thomas Ansbro. Um, uh, would someone like to introduce the, uh, resolution?
Introduced.
It's a motion.
Oh, it's a motion?
It's a motion?
Right, so the motion will, uh, commence the negotiations. Once you've, uh, come to terms with Mr. Ansbro, a, a resolution making his appointment and authorizing and approving his employment contract will be brought before the commission.
So I'll- So moved, Mr. Herbst?
Restate that. Motion to, to commence the negotiation.
Seconded. Well, to accept the, to, to-
That's correct.
To enter into negotiations with Mr. Ansbro.
I, I was really repeating what the-
Yes.
What the interim city attorney told us.
Okay.
What about where it says we have to designate who's going to negotiate the contract?
Well, I-
I, I would, I would nominate the mayor.
Okay. All right, that's fine.
No, I, I don't, I don't think it should be anybody on staff. This is a charter position that reports to us, so it needs to be somebody from, from the dais, and, and I think the mayor, with his legal background, would be the ideal candidate for that.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, um.
Can I volunteer for anything else?
You're on a roll. Um, okay, so there's been a motion, it's been seconded. Um, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes, and congratulations.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentos?
Yes, and that motion is now approved.
And congratulations to Tom. Not so fast.
And nobody more so than D. Wayne.
And more important than that, congratulations.
For doing such a great job and hanging in there and, and giving us, uh, the benefit of your experience and the patience to put up with us.
Congratulations to D. Wayne, for sure.
Yeah. Hey, it was nice, nice to see you smiling all day.
Yes, thank you, boys.
Smiling all day, D. Wayne Spence.
It's like buying a boat.
Yes.
It's the first day you get it, and the day you sell it are the two happiest days.
This is not a big surprise to, um, some of you in private, but I really did appreciate the opportunity to, uh, I guess it was intern, as, as a city attorney. I, I learned a lot about my capabilities and, uh, and shortfalls as well. And so, thank you for the opportunity, and, um, I'm glad to serve Mr. Ansbro as his deputy.
Now, all, all that practice makes you the best deputy ever.
And thank you, Mr. Ansbro, for, um, participating in this process and for accepting the position. Absolutely. Okay, um, moving on to resolutions. This is appointment of board and committee members. Um, Mr. Clerk, could you please read the names to the record?
Yes. Uh, okay, for tonight's resolution, the Beach Business Improvement District Advisory Committee, Jeffrey Peterson. He's a consensus, uh, primary member for the Sonesta Fort Lauderdale Beach Resort. Central City Redevelopment Advisor Board, Carlton Smith, nominated by Commissioner Glassman. And we had a late, uh, add-on, and this was for a reappointment for the Audit Advisory Board, Joey Epstein, nominated by Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman. If we could add that as amended, and that rounds it out.
Okay, any other, uh, modifications or additions there being done? Would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduce.
The resolution's been introduced. Please call the roll.
And Vice Mayor, that's as amended?
As amended.
Thank you. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, appointing or nominating, if, if applicable, board and committee members as set forth in the exhibit attached here, too, and made a part here of. Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
The answer is yes. I'm not out of touch. Yes.
At it. But are we out of time?
Nice.
Uh, we only had the, we only had the room till 7:00 o'clock. There's another party here coming at 7:00, so can we hurry up?
Off-the-stage music.
I don't think-
Yes, it's a lipshitz bar mitzvah next, yeah, I mean.
Where, so, uh, you said yes, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes, but I do have one question. I know we sent over, um, an appointment for historic preservation. I don't see that on here. Is that?
When, when was it sent over?
Uh, last week.
Not aware of that one?
Okay.
All right. We'll, we'll leave it for the next meeting. That's fine.
If that, yeah, I could put on October 17th.
Yeah, Sonya had applied, and we had sent notice over that, uh, we wanted her appointed.
Okay, well, we'll add it to October 17th.
Thank you.
Commissioner Herbst, you said yes?
I did, yes.
Okay. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentos?
Yes, and those appointments are now, uh, confirmed. Uh, I want to thank those individuals for willing to participate in this process and, and for, and for, uh, committing, uh, your time and efforts to making the city a better place than it is today. So-
Yes, they did.
I told you, we had the room till 7:00.
Seven o'clock.
I had made an appointment with my ophthalmologist at this point.
I know. You would think. The new fiscal year just kicked in. We should have cash.
Put on your party suit.
I'm telling you.
Okay, uh, moving on to R2, a resolution approving exchange agreement with the United States General Services Administration for the, uh, Fort Lauderdale Federal Courthouse. We'll be exchanging our city hall for their building. No, I'm just kidding. Um, no, no, just kidding. Anyone have any, someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
Okay. This is with regard to, uh, a parking agreement, uh, for the new federal courthouse. The resolution's been introduced. Does anyone have any questions? Is anyone from GSA here tonight? Okay, there being no one, uh, please call the roll.
A resolution of City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, finding a public purpose, authorizing the proper city officials to execute and deliver an exchange agreement by and between the United States General Services Administration and the City of Fort Lauderdale, and any and all documents necessary and incidental thereto, accepting a ground lease with a minimum term of 22 years, subject to conditions, and accepting utilities, and authorizing the proper city officials to execute the ground lease and any and all documents necessary or incidental thereto, and providing for an effective date. Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and that resolution's approved. R three, resolution providing notice of intent to enter into a comprehensive agreement for a qualifying project submitted as an unsolicited proposal, and notice of intent to accept other proposals for the same project, 48-inch water transmission main from Prospect Lake Clean Water Center to Five Ash Water Treatment Plant. Would someone like to introduce the resolution?
So moved.
Mayor, there's also a need to fill in the blank with regards to the period of times for accepting proposals.
Right, so with regard to the resolution, whoever made, whoever introduced the resolution, how many days do we want to give this opportunity to be responded to by other people?
I think Alan wanted to, Mr. Mayor, Alan wanted to chime in on that.
Alan, do you want to give us your advice?
Mayor, Commissioners, basically what we have in the unsolicited proposal is very similar to a design criteria package. If we were to go out for bid for that, it would be a 30-day period that we typically follow. So I would recommend in this case that we adhere to that same 30-day period to receive any other offers that may come in.
Okay. Was it Commissioner Sturman, you're the one to introduce?
I think John beat me to it.
Did John, did you say anything?
Nope.
No, I didn't think so. Anyway, do you want, do you want, would someone like to have the resolution with a 30-day period?
I'm happy to introduce a resolution with a 30-day advertising period.
Okay, very good. If there are any other questions, if there are no other questions, please call the roll.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, pursuant to section 255-065 Florida statutes, providing notice of intent to enter into a comprehensive agreement for a qualifying project for the design and construction of a new 48-inch water transmission main from the future Prospect Lake Clean Water Center to a connection point at Five Ash Treatment Plant, and notice of intent to accept other proposals for the same project, and providing for an effective date. Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
No.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes. R four, resolution approving and ratifying a collective bargaining agreement. Is this really happening? Between the City of Fort Lauderdale and the Fort Lauderdale Professional Firefighters, Inc., IAAF Local 765, effective October 1, 2021, through September 30, 2023, and authorizing execution of the collective bargaining agreement. Would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
Wow, we have a chorus. The resolution's been introduced. Anyone have any questions? If none...
Do you want to change anything?
Yeah, please call the roll.
A resolution of City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving and ratifying a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Fort Lauderdale and Fort Lauderdale Professional Firefighters, Inc., IAAF Local 765, for the period October 1, 2021, through September 30, 2023, and authorizing execution of the collective bargaining agreement. Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
I just wanted to say that, and I know this took a little while, it's been about two and a half years without a contract, but I think when we look at the patience of everyone involved, and the fact that both the police and fire, with overwhelming numbers, more than 90% of voting membership saying yes to the contract, that we're finally hammered out after a long period of time, I think that speaks really well for both sides and for our commitment to our first responders. And I just wanted to say thank you to everyone for the patience involved to get us to this point, and also to thank the commission as well. I think everyone did a really great job.
Is that a yes or a no?
That's a yes.
And Mayor Trentalles? Mayor Trentalles?
Yes. So, R four has now been approved. Moving on to R five, resolution approving and ratifying a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Fort Lauderdale and Fort Lauderdale Professional Firefighters, Inc., IAAF Local 765 Battalion Chiefs, effective October 1, 2021, through September 30, 2023, and authorizing the execution of the collective bargaining agreement. Would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduce.
It's been introduced. Any questions? Any more speeches? Oh, I'm sorry. Please call the roll.
A resolution of City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving and ratifying a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Fort Lauderdale and Fort Lauderdale Professional Firefighters, Inc., IAAF Local 765 Battalion Chiefs, for the period October 1, 2021, through September 30, 2023, and authorizing execution of the collective bargaining agreement. Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and R five is now approved. Onto R six, resolution approving and ratifying a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Fort Lauderdale and the Fort Lauderdale Professional Firefighters, Inc., IAAF Local 765 Battalion Chiefs, effective October 1, 2023, through September 30, 2026, and authorizing execution of the collective bargaining agreement. Would someone like to introduce the resolution?
So moved.
It's been introduced. Anyone have any questions? There being none, please call the roll.
A resolution of City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving and ratifying a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Fort Lauderdale and Fort Lauderdale Professional Firefighters, Inc., IAAF Local 765 Battalion Chiefs, for the period October 1, 2023, through September 30, 2026, and authorizing execution of the collective bargaining agreement. Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and R six is now approved. R seven, resolution approving and ratifying a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Fort Lauderdale and Fort Lauderdale Professional Firefighters, Inc., IAAF Local 765, effective October 1, 2023, through September 30, 2026, and authorizing execution of the collective bargaining agreement. Someone like to introduce the resolution?
So moved.
Introduce.
It's been introduced. Any questions? There being none, please call the roll.
A resolution of City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving and ratifying a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Fort Lauderdale and Fort Lauderdale Professional Firefighters, Inc., IAAF Local 765, for the period October 1, 2023, through September 30, 2026, and authorizing execution of the collective bargaining agreement. Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and at this point, I want to echo the comments of Commissioner Glassman. In particular, I want to thank the city manager and your staff and the negotiators, who, when you took this job on, this was a task that was left undone. And as Commissioner Glassman indicated, it had been a couple of years without a contract, and we should never really let that happen again. And now that we have contracts through 2026, hopefully we can be able to continue to provide our firefighters, as well as our police officers, with the kind of contracts that they're entitled to, without any gaps in coverage between contracts. So, thank you again, Greg, and everyone that worked with you. It was a job well done.
Mr. Mayor, one quick thing.
Yeah, go ahead.
They seem to dim the lights. I don't think they put them all the way back. Is there any way, Greg, that you could have the lights brought back up again?
They're coming.
Okay, thank you very much.
I look better in the dark anyway, so...
No comment.
Yeah, but you will anyway.
Uh-huh.
Okay, R eight, this is a resolution establishing an affordable housing workforce housing tax reimbursement program. This is just to invest, this is just to try to figure one out, right?
This is to establish the program?
Yeah.
And, yes, and then you have a companion item, which is the next one, which is to enable the program with a specific entity.
Hold on a second. Okay, so yes, so it's been introduced, R eight's now been introduced. Any questions regarding it? There being none, please call the roll.
A resolution of City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, adopting and approving an affordable workforce housing tax reimbursement program for the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, authorizing other required action and providing an effective date. Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and R eight is now approved. R nine, a resolution approving an affordable housing workforce housing tax reimbursement incentive letter of intent in substantially the form attached, and authorize the city manager to execute such letter on behalf of the city, the ERA at 2135 South Andrews Avenue. Someone like to introduce the item?
So introduced.
Jeff Burns, you still here? Oh, there you are. You just signed up to speak for questions only, correct? Okay. Anyone have any other questions? There being none, please call the roll.
A resolution of City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, authorizing the city manager on behalf of the City of Fort Lauderdale to execute and deliver a letter of intent for the project known as the ERA located at 2135 South Andrews Avenue, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, subject to the limitations set forth here and providing for an effective date. Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and that resolution's now approved. Excuse me. I want to thank you, Jeff, for making the suggestion and giving us a, an outline of how we can continue to try to incentivize affordable housing and workforce housing projects. So, thank you for introducing that to our city, and hopefully we'll continue to repeat it and be able to provide affordable housing for many more people. OSR one, excuse me, OFR one. This is a first reading, an ordinance to amend City of Fort Lauderdale Unified Land Development Regulations, Table of Dimensional Requirements, Single Family Dwelling Cluster to Add Minimum Building Separation Dimensional Requirements, Provide for Consistent Regulations in Various Zoning Districts, and to Require Easements Along the Property Line of Cluster Developments to be Unobstructed. I have no one sign up to speak. Anyone have any questions? Someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
The ordinance has been introduced. Please call the roll.
An ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida's Unified Land Development Regulations by specifically amending the following sections. Section 47-5.32, entitled Table of Dimensional Requirements for the RD-15 and RDS-15 Districts. Section 47-5.33, entitled Table of Dimensional Requirements for the RC-15 and RCS-15 Districts. Section 47-5.34, entitled Table of Dimensional Requirements for the RM-15 and RMS-15 Districts. Section 47-5.35, entitled Table of Dimensional Requirements for the RML-25 Districts. Section 47-5.36, entitled Table of Dimensional Requirements for the RMM-25 Districts. Section 47-5.37, entitled Table of Dimensional Requirements for the RMH-25 Districts. Section 47-5.38, entitled Table of Dimensional Requirements for the RMH-60 Districts. And section 47-18.9, entitled Single Family Dwelling Attached Cluster to Add Minimum Building Separation Dimensional Requirements, Provide for Consistent Regulations in Various Zoning Districts, and to Require Easements Along the Property Line of Cluster Developments to be Unobstructed, Providing for Conflict, Providing for Severability, and Providing for an Effective Date. Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and OFR one is now approved on first reading. OFR two, first reading, an ordinance to amend City of Fort Lauderdale Unified Land Development Regulations Regarding Single Family Dwellings Attached Townhouses to Require Easements Along the Property Lines of Townhouse Developments to be Unobstructed, and to Add Language Restricting the Location of Waste and Recycling Containers Used for Townhouse Dwelling Units. Would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
The ordinance has been introduced. Any questions? There being none, please call the roll.
An ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending 47-18.33 of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida Unified Land Development Regulations, entitled Single Family Dwelling Attached Townhouses, to require easements along the property lines and townhouse developments to be unobstructed, and to add language restricting the location of solid waste, yard waste, and recycling containers used for townhouse dwelling units, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and OSR one is...
OFR two.
Excuse me. That was OF, that was OSR one, right?
OFR two.
Excuse me, OSR two.
OFR.
OFR two, sorry. Now, we're on to OSR one, second reading. This is a quasi-judicial ordinance approving a rezoning from heavy commercial light industrial business, B three, District to Uptown Urban Village Northeast District, City of Fort Lauderdale. This is at 6700 and 6750 North Andrews Avenue, RD Investment Properties LLC. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in, and the commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received, and make them a part of the record. We have one person who signed up to speak, Barbara Hall, but that's just to answer questions, right? Anyone have any disclosures? Commissioner Herbst?
Yes, on 8/24, I met with Barbara Hall.
Vice Mayor?
No, none.
I have no additional disclosures. Commissioner Glassman?
Nothing additional.
And Commissioner Sturman?
Barbara Hall.
Okay, would someone like to move to close public hearing?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll to close public hearing.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and public hearing is now closed. Would someone like to introduce the ordinance for OSR one?
Introduce.
It's been introduced, please call the roll.
An ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending 47-1.6. B of the City of Fort Lauderdale Unified Land Development Regulations Through the Revision of the Official Zoning Map of the City of Fort Lauderdale and Schedule A Revised Compilation Attached There To and By Reference Made a Part Thereof, so as to rezone from B three, Heavy Commercial Light Industrial Business District to Urban Uptown Village Northeast District, a portion of parcel A reflections according to the plot thereof as recorded in Plot Book 19, page 46, of the public records of Broward County, Florida, located northwesterly of I-95, east of North Andrews Avenue, north of East Cypress Creek Road, and south of Cypress Creek Canal, all said lands being in the City of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and OSR one is now approved on second reading. Congratulations. OSR two, a second reading, quasi-judicial ordinance rezoning from multifamily mid-rise medium-high-density district to Northwest Regional Activity Center Mixed Use East District. This is at 624 Northwest Fourth Avenue. The applicant is 312 Northwest Seventh Street, LLC. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in, and the commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received, and make them a part of the record. Commissioner Herbst, do you have any additional disclosures?
None.
Vice Mayor?
No additional.
I have no additional. Commissioner Glassman?
No additional.
And Commissioner Sturman?
No additional.
Okay, no one has signed up to speak. Someone please move to close public hearing?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll to close public hearing.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and public hearing is now closed on OSR two. Yes, and public hearing is now closed on OSR two. Would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduce.
The ordinance has been introduced, please call the roll.
In ordinance amending section forty-seven dash one point six point B of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida Unified Land Development Regulations Through the Revision of the Official Zoning Map of the City of Fort Lauderdale in Schedule A Revised Compilation Attached to or To and by Reference Made a Part thereof, so as to rezone from residential multifamily and mid-rise medium-high-density district to Northwest Regional Activity Center Mixed Use East, all of lots thirty-seven and thirty-eight, block three twenty-two, progresso according to plot thereof as recorded in Plot Book two, page eighteen of the public records of Dade County, Florida, located north of Northwest Sixth Street, east of Northwest Fourth Avenue, west of Northwest Third Avenue, south of Northwest Seventh Street, all said lands being in the City of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sternman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Tals?
Yes, and OSR two is now approved on second reading. OSR three, the final item of tonight's agenda, this is a second reading quasi judicial ordinance rezoning from residential multifamily mid-rise medium-high-density district to Northwest Regional Activity Center Mixed Use West District. This is at six thirty-nine Northwest Ninth Avenue LLC. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in and the commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received and make them a part of the record. Commissioner Herbst, do you have any additional disclosures?
No.
Vice Mayor?
No additional.
I have no additional. Commissioner Glassman?
No additional.
And Commissioner Sternman?
Um, no additional.
Okay, no one has signed up to speak. Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
Some move.
Some move.
We okay?
No, no, no additional. I thought there was one, no additional.
Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sternman?
Commissioner Sternman, this is to close public hearing.
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Tals?
Yes, and public hearing is now closed. Would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduce.
The ordinance is now introduced. Please, please call the roll.
In ordinance amending section forty-seven dash one point six point B of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida Unified Land Development Regulations Through the Revision of the Official Zoning Map of the City of Fort Lauderdale in Schedule A Revised Compilation Attached to or To and by Reference Made a Part thereof, so as to rezone from residential multifamily mid-rise medium-high-density district to Northwest Regional Activity Center Mixed Use West, all of lots three, four, five, six, seven, and eight, June Park according to plot thereof as recorded in Plot Book twenty-two, page sixteen of the public records of Broward County, Florida, together with the east halves, east half of the adjacent alley of said lots vacated by city ordinance C dash eighty-nine twenty-one, recorded in the official records books one six four six one, page one oh one of the public records of Broward County, Florida, located north of Northwest Sixth Street, east of Northwest Tenth Avenue, west of Northwest Ninth Avenue, and south of Northwest Seventh Street, all said lands being in the City of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sternman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Tals?
Yes, and public hearing is now closed. Would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduce.
The ordinance is now introduced. Please, please call the roll.
In ordinance amending section forty-seven dash one point six point B of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida Unified Land Development Regulations Through the Revision of the Official Zoning Map of the City of Fort Lauderdale in Schedule A Revised Compilation Attached to or To and by Reference Made a Part thereof, so as to rezone from residential multifamily and mid-rise medium-high-density district to Northwest Regional Activity Center Mixed Use East, all of lots thirty-seven and thirty-eight, block three twenty-two, progresso according to plot thereof as recorded in Plot Book two, page eighteen of the public records of Dade County, Florida, located north of Northwest Sixth Street, east of Northwest Fourth Avenue, west of Northwest Third Avenue, south of Northwest Seventh Street, all said lands being in the City of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sternman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Tals?
Yes, and public hearing is now closed. Would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduce.
The ordinance is now introduced. Please, please call the roll.
In ordinance amending section forty-seven dash one point six point B of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida Unified Land Development Regulations Through the Revision of the Official Zoning Map of the City of Fort Lauderdale in Schedule A Revised Compilation Attached to or To and by Reference Made a Part thereof, so as to rezone from residential multifamily and mid-rise medium-high-density district to Northwest Regional Activity Center Mixed Use East, all of lots thirty-seven and thirty-eight, block three twenty-two, progresso according to plot thereof as recorded in Plot Book two, page eighteen of the public records of Dade County, Florida, located north of Northwest Sixth Street, east of Northwest Tenth Avenue, west of Northwest Ninth Avenue, and south of Northwest Seventh Street, all said lands being in the City of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sternman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Tals?
Yes, and public hearing is now closed. Would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduce.
The ordinance is now introduced. Please, please call the roll.
In ordinance amending section forty-seven dash one point six point B of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida Unified Land Development Regulations Through the Revision of the Official Zoning Map of the City of Fort Lauderdale in Schedule A Revised compilation attached to or To and by Reference Made a Part thereof, so as to rezone from residential multifamily and mid-rise medium-high-density district to Northwest Regional Activity Center Mixed Use East, all of lots thirty-seven and thirty-eight, block three twenty-two, progresso according to plot thereof as recorded in Plot Book two, page eighteen of the public records of Dade County, Florida, located north of Northwest Sixth Street, east of Northwest Fourth Avenue, west of Northwest Third Avenue, south of Northwest Seventh Street, all said lands being in the City of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sternman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Tals?
Yes, and OSR two is now approved on second reading. OSR three, the final item of tonight's agenda, this is a second reading quasi judicial ordinance rezoning from residential multifamily mid-rise medium-high-density district to Northwest Regional Activity Center Mixed Use West District. This is at six thirty-nine Northwest Ninth Avenue LLC. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in and the commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received and make them a part of the record. Commissioner Herbst, do you have any additional disclosures?
No.
Vice Mayor?
No additional.
I have no additional. Commissioner Glassman?
No additional.
And Commissioner Sternman?
Um, no additional.
Okay, no one has signed up to speak. Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
Some move.
We okay?
No, no, no additional. I thought there was one, no additional.
Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sternman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Tals?
Yes, and public hearing is now closed. Would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduce.
The ordinance is now introduced. Please, please call the roll.
In ordinance amending section forty-seven dash one point six point B of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida Unified Land Development Regulations Through the Revision of the Official Zoning Map of the City of Fort Lauderdale in Schedule A Revised compilation attached to or To and by Reference Made a Part thereof, so as to rezone from residential multifamily and mid-rise medium-high-density district to Northwest Regional Activity Center Mixed Use West, all of lots three, four, five, six, seven, and eight, June Park according to plot thereof as recorded in Plot Book twenty-two, page sixteen of the public records of Broward County, Florida, together with the east halves, east half of the adjacent alley of said lots vacated by city ordinance C dash eighty-nine twenty-one, recorded in the official records books one six four six one, page one oh one of the public records of Broward County, Florida, located north of Northwest Sixth Street, east of Northwest Tenth Avenue, west of Northwest Ninth Avenue, and south of Northwest Seventh Street, all said lands being in the City of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sternman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Tals?
Yes, and OSR three is now approved on second reading. Uh, is there any further business of the commission?
Yes, there is one other item.
Okay.
We have an unresolved open item from last, the last meeting, PH one. It needs to be resolved. It's open, it has not been adjudicated. Um, I just want to ask the city attorney.
What is, what is it?
What is it? PH one from last meeting.
What was it, though?
It was an item on the swimming hall of fame that was never, uh...
Hold on, let's get to it.
PH one from last meeting.
Yeah, PH one.
It's still open, it has not been adjudicated.
Approving a comprehensive agreement with the Hall of Fame partners, what was not, what was the open item?
Uh, it has not been duly voted on.
We voted on it, we voted on it.
Um, okay, let me, there's three, a couple things, we got to go through this right now. Number one, uh, a motion was made with an amendment and duly seconded, and we never voted on that. Number two...
Wait, 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 wait.
No, no, wait, wait, I have the floor.
What motion was, was made?
John Herbst made a vote, John Herbst made a motion with an amendment. I seconded that, and we never voted on it. You later on came up with a suggestion to vote on it without the amendment, uh, that was never, there was never a motion to advance that, was never seconded, and number three, and here's the kicker, John had the floor, there was a motion made by Commissioner Glassman to call the question, the que, that was never seconded, the motion to call the question failed, so John has the floor and the motion is still open with John with the floor.
Uh, the motion to call the question did not fail.
It did, it needed a si, a two-thirds, and he did not get two-thirds. It was, here's the deal, uh, it was two-thirds, which means four out of six. Somebody said, okay, it has to be three point two people, it has to be four two, and somebody said, well, three point two people, we have three, it's closer to three than three and a half, and...
Well, that person was our city attorney.
But here's the, no, but somebody made a comment, three point two people, um, you would need John or me to add an arm or a leg, and we don't vote body parts, we vote all human beings, so you'd need four people. Three to two, two-thirds means sixty-seven percent, we got sixty percent. That motion failed, John has the floor, the co-question was not called. The question is, what do we do now, uh, city attorney? Do we have to notice it? Do we set a date to continue it? How do we go forward from here?
Uh, the motion on Pete, on that item passed.
It didn't, John still has the floor, the question was called, John, uh, John and I voted no, on a three, a three to two vote, the calling of the question failed, so John still has the floor.
So Commissioner, the question was called by Commissioner Glassman?
Correct. He needed a sixty-six percent to pa, to call the question.
The question was called by Commissioner Glassman.
Correct.
The item came forward for consideration before the commission. Uh, the mayor mentioned that it would take four, a vote of four individuals to pass the motion to call the question.
Correct.
I was asked what that, what the vote count would be, I did say on the record that it would be two-thirds, and the mayor would have been correct in his calculation of the two-third votes, but then I stated on the record that it would just take three votes. This was before the vote was taken. The commission then proceeded to vote on the, on the item, and the vote was announced, and you proceeded to move forward with the next item. The city has not adopted any rules of procedure. We have not adopted any rules, not Robert rules or any rules, and based on the assertion following my, uh, bad math, I guess, and saying that the three votes passed, that constitutes a waiver on the, on behalf of the commission.
I, I didn't, I, I objected to it at the spot, and wasn't, that was not recognized at the time.
So you...
And there's another problem, okay, go ahead.
So, so procedurally, you would have to, uh, you would have to raise a proper procedural objection, and if that fails, then you would raise an appeal.
Okay, we have another issue, too.
Well, wait, let's finish with one issue first.
Okay.
So where, what is it, what's the resolution of this objection, then?
Uh, in my opinion, John still has the floor, and the, and the, and public, and our discussion has not been closed.
Well, we already voted.
Right. Well, here's the, here's the issue, you voted on something that was, on a motion that was not made. John made a motion, an amended motion, and Steve and you went back and forth, is this the original one without John's amendment? Is it back, nobody said, I move to have it, to, to vote on it. Nobody said, I'm moving to, uh, to advance this motion as, as is, as originally stated. Nobody seconded it. You just voted. You voted without anybody making the motion on it. The motion on the floor was, was an amended, amended motion that John had made, and we never voted on that, and you can't have a second motion until the first one is closed. As far as procedure goes, that we've always followed, you can't vote on something when there's another open-ended item there, and number two, you could get away with this in conference all the time, you can't do this in a formal meeting, it just doesn't cut mustard.
Well, first of all, let's back up a little bit. Um, you're rewriting the history of the moment.
Exactly.
Because, uh, first of all, it was not a motion.
So it's a resolution, but nobody made a resolution.
Well, you have to let, you, are you finished speaking?
Go ahead.
I'll be happy to let you speak.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, and a resolution was introduced, and, and it was voted on, and it was four to one, and that ends the, that, that puts closure to the item.
No, a resolution was never introduced. A resolution was introduced with an amendment, but you, and I don't know how the chair is allowed to do this, introduced a motion without the amendment.
I didn't introduce any resolution.
Good, exactly, nobody introduced a resolution without.
No, someone did introduce.
We voted on something that was not introduced.
Someone did introduce a resolution.
With an amendment, and we didn't vote on that.
Because another resolution was introduced.
No.
Well, uh, we can, we can, we, we can get the record up, and I'll be happy to, you know, revisit this. Of course, you're on the, you are not on the successful side, so you cannot bring this back.
No, there was no vote, there's no success, the vote was, there's no legitimate...
Were you not here when we voted four to one?
You voted on a suggestion you made, nobody advanced the motion.
Of course, someone introduced the resolution.
With, with an amendment, and we didn't vote on what he introduced.
Well...
It's a problem.
Your memory is incorrect.
Well, I suggest that this, that until this is resolved, that the city attorney don't, doesn't, uh, doesn't sign any contracts or anything until we get this resolved.
It is resolved.
Mayor, did you sign the comprehensive agreement?
It hasn't been given to me yet. Okay. Well, the issue is resolved, so the, the vote, the vote was taken, the vote was taken. Uh, there was no objection from the commissioner that night.
Correction, Dwayne, I objected multiple times, please.
And I objected.
I objected that night, in, at the time, I objected repeatedly to the restatement of my resolution.
Over and over again.
Over and over again, repeatedly.
And I...
We went through this once before, and you said I didn't object timely.
When the, when the roll call was taken, was there an objection at that time?
I was still objecting, yes, but, but you were moving forward with it, over my objections.
But you voted for it.
Over my objections.
But you voted for it.
Over my objections, because you wouldn't...
What does that mean?
Because you would, no one would recognize my objection, so it was moved forward.
And I, I objected also.
What was your objection, by the way?
I objected to you restating my motion, and the reason that I did that was because you have done that previously, and I took this up with Mr. Spence, and he said, yes, the mayor restated your motion, I said, he's not allowed to do that, and Mr. Spence said, well, you didn't object to it. I said, I didn't think I had to object, my motion stands, nobody could amend it without the amended being accepted, so when you attempted to amend my motion from your seat as the chair, I didn't feel I needed to object to it at the time, but I let that one pass because that was the guidance that I got from Mr. Spence, and so when you restated my motion at the last meeting, I repeatedly, specifically objected to it, and I did not assent to it. I made that abundantly clear.
So are you, are you saying that the, when I stated that we're voting on the resolution that stated in the, in the agenda, as is, I recall saying that?
Yes, you did.
And, um, and you said that you wanted the opportunity to be able to come back and, uh, and to have the opportunity to speak with the, with the applicant, and to be able to come back and make changes, and I said that this particular resolution said that we're voting on a comprehensive agreement in substant, in that substantially, uh, in that substantial form, I forget the lang, actual language, and, and, and it was our understanding that because it said in, in that substantial form, that you accepted the fact that you would have the opportunity to, to meet with them, and if there are any tweaking that had to be done, you still had that opportunity, so that in reality, you voted for it as stated in the resolution, at, attached as the exhibit, I specifically said it was, we're voting on the exhibit six, and, and exhibit six is what we voted on.
Right, and, and I objected, even though I voted for it.
But you voted for it.
Well, no, I did, because nobody would recognize my objection. I continued to object to it, and nobody would recognize my objection.
The cleanest way to address this is a motion to reconsider since you were on the prevailing side of the vote. Um, absent of that, uh, I think the recommendation...
Well, that's the other reason, by the way, that I voted in favor of it, because I understand that I have to be on the prevailing side to bring up a motion for reconsideration. I understood that.
So are you, are you moving to reconsider?
I wasn't prepared to...
Wait, I'm asking him.
No, 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 you're going too far, because, as he stated, the only resolution stated was a resolution with an amendment. We didn't vote on the resolution with an amendment, and we voted on something that you interpreted without the amendment, nobody made the resolution, we voted on something that nobody moved. Now, you can't, we've been following certain rules of procedure for all this time, we don't do it in conference, we've been doing it in, in those commission meetings all, and we're going to take for the very first time since I've been here, oh, this one instance, this one instance, we're going to throw away Robert's Rules of Order and procedure and what we've done historically and bend the rules.
The chair is responsible for clarifying what the actual members are voting on. And if there's not clarity on that, that should be, uh, made clear at that time. And there was an attempt and I, I.
But somebody had, somebody has to move an item for us to vote on it. Somebody has to move an item.
Commissioner introduced the resolution.
With an amendment. Nobody moved the resolution without the amendment. We voted on something nobody moved on. The only, only person that moved the resolution was Commissioner Herbst with an amendment. And we voted on, nobody moved the item that we voted on.
You just said that Commissioner Herbst.
With an amendment, but nobody moved the thing that Dean, the mayor talked about. Nobody moved it without the, if somebody wanted to say, let's, I moved the, the resolution without the amendment, it's been moved. Nobody did that.
What I, what I'm hearing is that Commissioner Herbst introduced a resolution. The mayor's clarification apparently changed that introduction. And if there is that confusion, the recommendation is that the board reconsider. Or someone makes a motion, someone who's on the prevailing side, make the motion to reconsider that item to revisit that.
And that wouldn't be taken up today? It would have to be taken up at a later time?
No, no.
No, 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 the item itself.
The motion to reconsider has to be taken up at the following meeting, which is now, by someone who's on the prevailing side. So.
But the discussion, if it does, if it does, if it does come through.
Then we take it up at a separate meeting.
At a later meeting.
Correct.
Correct, that's what I, you're right.
Yes. So is there a motion on the floor to reconsider?
Man, I just want to say one thing because I, I wanted to agree with Attorney Spence. The reason that I asked you for that clarification was because there was so much going on at the time. Before I voted, I wanted to be very clear about what we were voting on. And then I asked for that clarification, so it was very obvious what was before us. And then you did clarify that, and then we did vote. So I, I have to concur with Attorney Spence's recollection of this. Obviously, we don't have minutes, so I can't read any minutes. Um, but, uh, I, I do agree with that, and I believe that the vote was proper.
Okay. Is there any further business of the commission? There being none?
Wait, you, you asked a question, nobody answered.
And no one responded.
No one responded.
So that's it.
So, so let me, let me, uh, just kind of weigh in on this since it revolves around me. So, um, I, I appreciate Commissioner Sturman, um, bringing this up because I do think this is important procedurally. But let me state for the record that I am not going to call this up for reconsideration. I had an opportunity to meet with the team, clarified all of my concerns. We've made some changes, as you're aware. Uh, it was, it was a very productive and collegial meeting. Um, I'm comfortable now with where we are. We made one, I think, very important correction as it related to the increase in the rent, which I'm, I'm very happy with. And we've clarified my issues and my concerns. We're, we're, yeah, we're, we're, we're going to make more money.
Okay, good.
Um, and you know, given my background.
You'll have to let us know what that is at some point.
It's, it's a secret.
Okay.
So, but, so, so the bottom line is I, I'm not going to call this up because I'm, I'm happy with the outcome. But I, I will say, and, and I think it's time that we consider adopting Robert's Rules of Order. Because I, I don't see it reasonable, um, Mr. Spence, that you're saying that somebody had to raise that point for clarification because that's Robert's Rules of Order, but we haven't adopted Robert's Rules of Order. So there's no obligation for Commissioner Sturman to have to make a point of order because we don't follow Robert's Rules of Order. So we seem to choose when we follow Robert's Rules of Order and we don't follow it when it doesn't suit us. And this is not the first time this has come up through the many years that I've been doing this. So I think it's about time that we formalize this and maybe this goes to the Charter Review Board. Um, I don't know if we should do this by ordinance, but I think we need to have formal procedures for how we govern business. It's for our benefit, it's for your benefit, it's for staff's benefit. So this merely highlights it. This is now the second time within a month that this issue has come up. And I think it, uh, it begs the question as to why we haven't done this in the past. And I think it's about time we adopt Robert's Rules of Order. There's a book, we put it on the table, we all adhere to it. And so with that being said, I will not be calling this up for reconsideration. I'm comfortable with the, with the deal terms that we've achieved. And, uh, but again, I want to thank Commissioner Sturman for bringing this up because I agree with every point that he's made. Uh, I just don't think that there's a, a different outcome that I would expect at this point. So I'm happy to let it stand as is. But again, we need to work on our processes.
Okay. Is there any further business of the commission? Okay, there being none? I'm sorry, yeah, we're going to go back to conference here. Uh, do you have any, do you have any, anything? Mr. Spence, do you have to, we have a closed door? I do. Um, give me, no, I'm announcing for. Pursuant to floor statute section 286.0118A, I'm seeking advice on the following matter. City of Fort Lauderdale Etelle versus, uh, Terminal Ventures LLC, case number C A C E twenty-two dash zero one one seven eight seven. Uh, during the city commission regular meeting of October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three at approximately four thirty P M or as soon thereafter as may be heard. Present at the attorney-client session will be Mayor Dean J. Trentalis, Vice Mayor Pamela Beasley Pittman, Commissioner John C. Herbst, Commissioner Steve Glass, Stephen Glassman, Commissioner Warren Sturman, uh, City Manager Greg Cheveria, interim City Attorney Dwayne M. Spent, Assistant City Attorney Shari C. Wallen, outside counsel Ed A. Dion of Neighbors Giblins, certified court reporter Bailey Etten of Court Reporting. The estimated length of this session will be approximately fifteen minutes. Okay. Anything further? There being done, the city commission meeting is now concluded. We'll now resume to our conference meeting, and we're at the commission reports. Commissioner, uh, Herbst, do you have any commission reports?
So as you all know, I typically don't, but we have something pretty important to announce. So our Fort Lauderdale Fire Rescue Company twenty-nine took first place as the people's choice at the International Chili Competition in Myrtle Beach.
I need samples.
That's right.
Well, I invited them to come to the commission meeting with samples.
With samples, that should have been dinner tonight. So you know, we, we, we sent them off with our proclamation last time, and I, and I think that helped, you know? So, um, yeah, they, they, they did a phenomenal job, and I'm, I'm proud of, uh, proud of our firefighters. And, uh, and it just goes to show that they spend more time cooking than anything else around a fire station.
Yeah.
I, I look forward to my.
I want to take back that vote we just did tonight.
I, 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 I'm looking forward to my next overnight shift so I get to go and eat again. Um, and then, uh, just one other point of privilege, too. I just want to say that, uh, tomorrow is Judy Stern's birthday, so I just want to wish her a happy birthday to my good friend Judy.
Another Libra in the room. There's still cake in the back room. Yeah. Okay, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I'd like to share several things that I had, um, well, the first item is really a, um, notice of one of our, um, neighbors passing away. Her name is Ann Naves. Um, Naves, yes. Um, Ms. Naves actually was born in November nineteen twenty-six. She was the niece to Ruben Stacy. She lived in the home, um, with him before the incident that occurred, um, on Davie and what we know to be Davie and Thirty-First Avenue now. Um, her services will be this, um, Thursday coming. So we will keep her and her family, um, in our thoughts. Um, Ms. Naves was an educator. Um, she was a member of the Zeta Phi Beta Sorority and also a longtime member of the Trailblazers. So I wanted to share that with our community. On the twenty-first of September, I had the privilege of attending the Children's Service Council Special Read Event. It was at Stephen Foster Elementary. The author Jenny, Jenny Torres Sanchez, she read her book, which is entitled, "With Lots of Love to the Kindergarten's Class." And it was actually the kickoff announcing the upcoming National Read Day and Record Day, which is on October twenty-eighth. So I'm inviting, um, all of us on the dais to, um, reach out and, and, and look forward to reading to one of the schools on the, on the twentieth of October. And I can, my staff can help us get the additional information, how to register. Also on the twenty-first, um, with the aid of, um, Neighborhood, Neighborhood Support, um, George and, um, Junna. I always pronounce Junior name wrong, um, yes. Um, they went out with us to, um, visit one of the families that we are going to, um, do some volunteering on the twenty-eighth for Care's Day. We're going to do some landscaping, um, to that home in Marrows Park. Also on the twenty-first, the twenty-first was a busy day. Um, we attended the Pastor's Police Forum, which was held at the YMCA on Sixth Trunk. It was opportunity for, um, the pastors along with law enforcement to talk about the gun violence that we are witnessing in District Three. Um, a lot of masterminding, conversation, collaboration to talk about how we're going to, um, combat along with the police to, um, come to resolve with that large number of gun violence that we have been experiencing. Also on the twenty-ninth, no, I'm sorry, the twenty-seventh of September, I was able to attend at the main library, a art exhibit which was entitled Breathstrokes of History. And this was, um, different artwork that was, um, done by local artists that represent the history of Sixth Trunk. And the young lady, she's a high school student. Her name, first name is Yana, and the last name, I don't want to pronounce it wrong. It's spelled Diaz and David, A-N-Z-I-G. And she really put this event together. Um, there was, um, a large number of, uh, local artists that, um, prepared these panels. And the panels are going to be placed on the Cone Building or the Cone Plaza on Sixth Trunk Boulevard, um, in the doorways and the windows. Cause right now the building, um, is vacant and we are using those panels to bring, um, a new look and an opportunity to change the blight that's in the community. But, um, the talent was amazing. There was photos of, um, paintings of Dr. Sixtrunk, Blanche Ely, um, different, um, events of the community. So it was a great opportunity to witness that. So I'm really excited about, um, that exhibit, exhibit that we've witnessed. Also on the twenty-ninth, I had the opportunity of touring one of the nonprofits in our community. Their name is Empower, Empower Her Two. They're located in, um, actually District Two. Um, a young lady that has a great passion where she's working with, um, young ladies actually in, um, Districts Two, Three, and Four. And she walked us through her, her facility and explained to us how she's, um, reaching out to the community. So I'm excited about that. Also upcoming, um, this is an invitation to the dais and of course to the city overall. On this Saturday, the seventh, um, the Carlton Moore Family and Friends Day will be at Oswald Park from three P M to eight P M. And that's an event we know to honor, um, Carlton Moore and all the things that he had accomplished in his lifetime. And there's two items that I want to bring forward for discussion. In regards to, this is a request to, um, discuss a ordinance change. And this is retaining pertaining to the semi trucks parking in our neighborhoods. Um, in District Three, we are, uh, witnessing in the Southern End and the Northern End and the central areas of our district, a large number of semi trucks parking in our neighborhoods. On neighborhood streets, they're just parking.
Where in particular?
Where? Particular there, um, um, Fifth Street, Northwest Fifth Street and Fifteenth Avenue in Marrows Park. We have them, I, I talked about it, um, a couple of weeks ago when we had the last meeting. Um, Twenty-Ninth Avenue and, um, between Broward and First.
Right.
All through the neighborhoods, these are just some of the areas that we can pinpoint on the Northern End, Northwest, um, Fifteenth Avenue, and, um, that should be about Twentieth Street. Um, this is just, uh, some of the areas, but this is a large issue that, a big issue that we're dealing with. And we've been talking with, um, Code about it at every one of my pre-agenda meetings or if I attend one of the, um, Civic Association meetings, it is a discussion. And, um, it's, it's, it's a problem. So I want to talk about how we could, um, address that, look at the ordinance and figure out how we could make what we're doing, um, something more, um, with a little bit more bite in it. Um, there was a conversation last night with one of the, um, employees from, staff members from Code, and she was explaining to us that what they have been doing most recently, you, when they put the twenty-four hour sticker on it, on the, on the vehicle, now they're going back, if the vehicle comes back, they will, um, tow the vehicle. So we have seen in the past where the sticker goes on, the owner of the truck just removes the sticker and then drives somewhere else in, in the city and parks again. But she's indicating that, um, they're now following up with the license tag and they are towing the vehicles. I haven't seen it, but that, if that's the case, we definitely need to move to bring an end to this because our district is becoming a parking lot for semi trucks.
Yeah, how do you tow an eighteen wheeler though?
Oh, they, believe me, they have them.
They have.
They have a bigger truck, yes, they will.
Nine, the nineteen wheeler.
Yeah. So I would like for us, um, to discuss that ordinance. Um, I was going to say, uh, Mr. Spence, but you know, this, Mr. Ansboro now. But that is one of the things, one of the items that I want to have a discussion about. And the second, um, ordinance change is regarding digital signs for churches. Um, they want to be able to display their service information and then positive messages in the community. And currently, the way that the ordinance is written, it doesn't allow them to use the churches that are smaller. They cannot have a digital display board. So I would like to have a conversation where we could see how we could address that and have that, um, written into the ordinance as well.
Okay.
Thank you, that's all I have today.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Glassman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Wednesday, September twentieth, Flagler Village Civic Association. Wednesday, September twenty-seventh, um, had a really excellent, excellent president's roundtable where we bring together all the District Two neighborhood presidents. We have twenty-two of them. Uh, and I did want to thank staff, in particular, uh, Mr. Rogers for, uh, being there and explaining everything that's been going on. And also we had a really nice update on the, uh, police, uh, headquarters construction. And so pleased to see how quickly that project is really rolling since we all gathered there for the, uh, groundbreaking. That evening also the Middle River Terrace Association met and also Nermi Isles Homeowners Association met, um, with, uh, a new president there, a very new board and, uh, a huge increase, uh, in membership and an amazing, um, really an amazing safety and security program that they have initiated on those three streets. Thursday, September twenty-eighth, Central Beach Alliance meeting, um, at the, uh, Beach Community Center. Uh, more than one hundred people showed up. That's probably, I think, out of all the District Two association meetings that I go to, and maybe actually in the city, I, there aren't many, if any, neighborhood associations that get over a hundred members, um, at a meeting. So, um, kudos to Central Beach Alliance for getting that many people, uh, for an in-person meeting. Uh, Friday, September twenty-ninth, um, at the Marriott Harbor Beach, the International Swimming Hall of Fame Program for the weekend induction ceremonies began, uh, with special aquatic awards. Uh, really well attended, folks from all over. But I will tell you, the next night, Saturday, September thirtieth, um, at, at the Parker, um, our city, uh, received incredible, incredible recognition worldwide uh, as ESPN Plus broadcasts live from the Parker, the induction ceremonies. Now, this is not a city event, it was not a city event. It was an International Swimming Hall of Fame event. Uh, that being said, the broadcast, uh, highlighted the city in such an incredibly positive way. Um, the inductees, there were thirteen of them, uh, led by Michael Phelps was in town, uh, to receive that. And I know, Mayor, you were there as well, and I'm sure you can say a few words that I might forget. But the inductees from all over the world were so impressed with our city. Michael Phelps has not been in Fort Lauderdale since he set his first world record. In two thousand and two.
Two thousand and two.
In two thousand and two, he set his first world record, uh, right here in our pools. Um, this was his first time back in twenty-one years. Uh, he was incredibly impressed with what he has seen in the city. Uh, all of these inductees, all of these people that came from around the world and filled the Parker, they, they were just so positive about what they see. And I will tell you that they are so excited about what is still yet to come. They have seen the pools, they've seen the High Die Tower, uh, and they are very excited about the bookend project of the east and west part of the peninsula, uh, that we did move forward with on our comprehensive agreement. Uh, they are very excited to see, um, that project materialize. Um, I don't think we could have ever afforded to promote our city internationally like this. Um, but I did hear over and over and over how appreciative all these people were, uh, for our vision, uh, in, in moving this forward. Um, so I just wanted to comment on that because it really was, uh, quite a special evening, actually, quite a magical evening. Um, coming up, uh, I know that tomorrow night, we're all looking forward to the state of the city at the Parker. Thursday, October fifth, um, I have a meeting, uh, with Broward County about Breakers Avenue. I'm really hoping that with the help from both Senator Pizzo and Representative Lamarcus and the monies that we've allocated, and I'm hoping to also secure the rest of that funding, um, with Broward County. Um, Congressman Moskowitz, huh, has committed to assisting with about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that project as well. I believe it's gone out of committee, but it has not gone to the full house. Um, also Thursday, October fifth, there's a ribbon cutting in District Two for City Cave Float and Wellness Center at six twenty-five East Sunrise Boulevard. It's quite a unique concept, should be interesting, coming to us from Australia. Wednesday, October eleventh, Solid Waste Working Group will be meeting in person. Um, October twenty-fifth through twenty-ninth, obviously it's very exciting, you've seen the banners around town. But we will again see our Fort Lauderdale International Boat Show. So looking forward to that as well. Um, just a couple of things I wanted to mention in terms of comments. Um, City Attorney, I know that we have, uh, and I remember this from when I served on the Planning and Zoning Board. Planning and Zoning Board members are basically required to resign from other boards, right? In order to serve on the Planning and Zoning Board?
That's correct.
Okay, I, I think that we need to revisit the ordinance and maybe take it a step further. Um, I, I think that we might run into conflicts down the road with members. Um, I really believe that if you're appointed to the Planning and Zoning Board, you should not, not only serve on boards, but probably any kind of committees and task forces, especially if they're going to be extending into a long period of time. Uh, cause I just see possible problems coming up. I know that recently we've asked the Infrastructure Task Force to look at City Hall. We've asked them to do other things that basically, items that will come back to the Planning and Zoning Board. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, if those items come back to the Planning and Zoning Board and we have folks that have served on those task forces or committees, how would they then be able to weigh in on, at Planning and Zoning if they've already weighed in on a task force or a committee?
It depends on how they weighed in. If they've, um, demonstrated bias, uh, then that does pose a problem for a quasi judicial proceeding.
I just think it's cleaner. Um, obviously there's a reason that we say that if you serve on Planning and Zoning, you cannot serve on a board. I just think that if you're, if you're serving on Planning and Zoning, you should just not be serving on a board, a task force, or a committee. I think you should, it should be clean, planning and zoning only. That's just my opinion, I don't know how other people feel, but I did want to mention that because I have also heard that, uh, from other, um, other people in my district. Um, I wanted to just mention something because I wanted to ask City Attorney Spence. Um, there was a, a rather large front page article today, uh, entitled, "Recording Captures Conversation After Fort Lauderdale Meeting: Was It a Violation of People's Privacy?" It was a rather lengthy article. Um, I wanted to ask you, do we have any idea how long we have been recorded? In other words, how, how long in the past this has been happening? I know that some private residents just discovered it a couple of meetings ago. But if this has been going on for a while, and from what I read in the article, should we be concerned from a legal standpoint about those recordings of private conversations uh, when meetings were not actually taking place or there was a break? Um, is this an issue of concern for us?
So, um, the, there is a possible violation of the Florida Securities and Communications Act, but it's always, it's, it's very fact-specific. So it, it, you know, without having details of specific instances and circumstances, it's hard to say whether or not a violation of, of that particular statute has taken place. So, you know, it, uh, there could be an issue, but then again, there, there could not.
Well, just let me piggyback on this. So I think it's okay when people want to have their own listening devices. And I think we should maybe establish a protocol, like maybe we can put a, you know, like we do press conferences, like put a stand in front and anyone who wants to place their, their microphones or whatever in front of us. I have, I think that makes a lot of sense. Other, otherwise, you know, it becomes disorderly, there's no sense of, uh, of, of, you know, decorum when it comes to that kind of practice. And, you know, I welcome a hundred people wanting to record us. And, and I know there's been a camera all night recording this, these proceedings in addition to ours. So I think that, you know, maybe as a commission, we should establish a policy of how we can invite people to, to have recording devices and just, you know, put them out here so that we know they're there. That's all. we know they're there, that's all. Does that make a lot of sense to anybody here?
Yes, I mean, I've even had people say at my meetings that maybe people should just sign up or register or let everyone know so that it's obvious or transparent.
They don't have to register because I believe in anonymity, but if they just wanna put their recording device there, that's okay.
Actually, I think it's more than anonymity, I think it's your constitutional right. So you don't have to register to exercise your constitutional rights.
Yeah, okay, well, there's no one's.
No, that was just a suggestion, I'm pushing back on it, I think that's a very bad idea.
I have no problem setting a table in front of you.
I think that's a violation of constitutional rights. You have an opportunity to record from anywhere that you are, you can record in secret, there's ample case law on this.
Well, you can record in secret people's private conversations when a meeting is on a break or there's in-between meetings?
So it's not a violation of the statute to record during the public meeting.
Correct.
So there is, I mean, with regards to the procedures that you're suggesting, there's no way of enforcing that. Anyone with, you know, a phone or whatever recording device is allowed to record the audio conversations that occurs while we are in a public meeting. When we're outside of a public meeting, that gets a little more fact-specific with regards to that. Each person has a subjective meaning, their own personal expectation of privacy, but that expectation of privacy also has to be recognized by, reasonably recognized by the community as being a reasonable expectation of privacy. So, you know, and thankfully, I've gotten a lot of case law from Barbara Stern and I've done my own research as well. And it does get very fact-specific with regards to where the conversation is taking place, has the speaker taken precautions to keep their conversation private? So, you know, in fact, you know, I don't know the details of the fact situation, but based on the article, it seems like, for example, those residents went to the side and, you know, they took precautions so that their, whatever they were speaking about wasn't picked up. So a court may look at that as a reasonable expectation for those individuals within that group to expect privacy, whether or not they're in front of a microphone or whatever the case may be, it might be a different factual situation. But with regards to the suggestion that the mayor puts forward, it's a reasonable suggestion, but again, it's not something that we can enforce, you know, if someone is not complying, there's nothing that we can do with regards to that.
Whatever, just trying to bring some sense of, you know, decorum to the proceedings, that's all. I mean, it seems like it got out of hand and, you know, I don't know, there was no, you know, there's, nothing really happened, there was no particular recording, recorded conversations that I think compromise anybody, but down the road, I don't know. I mean, I hate to think that when I talk to somebody in a room privately in a corner that they're not wired, you know, for, you know, for, I mean, nothing I have to say can be that important anyway, so I can't imagine why they'd wanna do that. But the point is that, I mean, I think your point is well-taken, Commissioner. I think that when people come to a public space, there is that loss of expectation of privacy to some extent, but I do know that there's a lot of case law out there, but it is very fact-specific, and there has been some recent cases here in Florida that talk about that, even if you're in a private conversation, if you're in a restaurant, that loss of privacy is waived if you are at a public place like that, even though you're talking one-on-one with somebody. So I think the judge said, you know, if someone could overhear you in the next table, then you waived your right to privacy, something like that. It was just, so, it's, you know, look, whatever we have to say is public knowledge, and if people wanna hear what we have to say, that's great. If we want privacy, then let's just be more circumspect as to where we have those conversations. If I'm talking with the city attorney, obviously, do it in a private space so that I know that our privileged conversations are not being recorded.
Right, well, I'm just saying, there is that possibility that you might go to the side of the stage with the city attorney and have a brief conversation about something, if that's picked up in a recording and the meeting has been either adjourned or you're on a break, is that okay?
No, it's not okay.
Okay.
It's not okay, and that is why I expressed my concern when I heard about the recording in the first place. I mean, there are occasions where, you know, we have these lights on the microphones to know whether or not our microphone is hot or not. We turn them on on purpose, and I speak with my clients on the dais and advise them and speak to them about matters from my seat. I did not, I have a expectation that there is some privacy there. I know that there's some disagreement with regards to that, but again, I think it's fact-specific and I think, I think that my position is supported by case law, so.
Well, thank you for the clarification. That's good, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Sturman.
I wanna start by thanking City Attorney, Dwayne Space Spence, thank you for stepping up when we needed you most. I know, we had a void there, you'd step right in without blinking, didn't wanna be there, and I wanna thank you for the service you did, and I wanna congratulate you for the exit ramp that you're taking right now. I know that you're looking forward to going back, but thank you.
Thank you again, Commissioner, I appreciate that.
It's an actual, I mean, I don't have to agree with you, but I do appreciate and respect everything you've done, I do thank you.
And that, actually, that means a lot, a lot, lot to me. I do take pride in professionalism and, you know, my law degree and my board certification and, you know, I appreciate it when the client understands, you know, that I am trying to provide them with the best legal advice, even if they disagree and if they get advice elsewhere, but as long as they respect that, I appreciate it. So thank you for the kind words.
And your job is not to agree with us, and I appreciate that. I wanna thank Scott, wonder if you had fire? Fire union, we have a contract that's awesome, looking forward to hitting the road running. I wanna thank, a couple things, Ben Rogers, and as always, I mean, every week I'm thanking, I'm thanking Colonel Dodd and Chris Cooper, I've had some issues with the neighborhood with Greg, Greg, thank you again for marshaling them, we've served our neighborhood well. On a brighter note, the staff knows I took Brightline for the first time, went from here to Orlando, and I'm gonna tell you right now, I'm never taking my car again. What a phenomenal experience it was, door-to-door. We came back, it was pouring rain, the, looking on my app, I saw, you know, the ways, it was red and yellow the whole way through traffic jams, and we're zipping by at eighty-eight miles an hour. I think once we hit eighty-eight, the flux capacitor hit in or something like that, but we're, and it couldn't have been any better. I don't think I'm ever gonna take a car again, it was a phenomenal experience. I'm not getting paid by Brightline, don't worry, this is an independent thing. Just one last little tidbit on some infrastructure issues, I wanna thank the people from Water Garden, they endured above and beyond, they had that water break and then they had boiled water for, was it over three weeks, Alan?
Twenty-two days.
Twenty-two days. I know everybody's upset, but behind the scenes, Public Works was doing whatever they can, took whatever steps necessary. The city manager, the extra step to, they're gonna be replacing that whole water main for all of those buildings and not in the next two years, six months, three months, they're starting that work. I think they started it today, right?
Yes.
They started yesterday, they're already starting to replace the water main, which is awesome, thank you very much. The rains and floods remind us, again, you've heard that theme this whole night with me, my neighborhood is crying out, the infrastructure, and I think we need to go ahead and continue to prioritize infrastructure. I think the mayor's gonna be making some major announcement coming down the pike. I wanna thank, again, the fire department for delivering water to the people when they had the boiled water. I am gonna be having a town hall meeting coming up pretty soon, going through infrastructure, just to let the community know, and I wanna thank my colleagues here on the dais, thank you very much.
You're welcome. With regard to the Water Garden, I met with, I happened to run into some friends of mine who live at the Water Garden, and at first, you know, the whole episode was just unfortunate and chaotic, and people were very upset. But I have to tell you that you made a lot of friends, Alan, and your staff, because your response to the situation and now redoubling your efforts to, you know, install replacement pipes and so forth, they're just amazed at the response the city has made, and so I wanted to make sure that I publicly acknowledged all of those comments to you because, you know, it was, the way the city responded was really remarkable and everybody appreciated Just a couple things, I attended a conference in Amsterdam last week on HIV, and one of the reasons why I attended it is because it talks about how HIV is more, less, it's less of a medical issue today as it is a social issue. It's always been a social issue, but the medical aspect of it has generally dominated it, but with the advancement of medications and precautionary measures, the rate of HIV has gone down significantly. On the other hand, the stigma and the taboo which is still associated with it has put many communities at risk for fear that people are not practicing safe sex and are not taking precautions, are not getting tested, and that's unfortunately why our community throughout the entire nation has one of the highest incidence of increase of HIV, especially amongst communities of color. And so I attended that conference hoping to get some ideas on how I can bring those best practices back to our city, and so in the future, when the opportunity arises, I'd like to be able to discuss that with my colleagues. I also attended the ISOP induction ceremony. It kinda disappointing that our local media, in particular, the Sun Sentinel refused to put anything in the paper about it. We were visited by some of the biggest luminaries in the swimming and diving world, people with not just one or two gold medals, but dozens of medals to their name, were in our community and were so proud to have been part of the International Swimming Hall of Fame, permanent induction of their, recognizing them for their achievements in their particular field, it was swimming, diving, artistic swimming, there was a lady that won over fifty medals, she was in the Special Olympics. It brought tears to your eyes to see the caliber of athletes that came to our community this past weekend, and I was very, very proud that we were able to host it at the Parker. Commissioner Glassman, I know you're on the board, you're our ex-officio member, so they really appreciated your being there and all the support you give them, and I'm very, very proud to know that we are moving forward with creating a permanent home for the International Swimming Hall of Fame, and it's gonna be an iconic set of buildings in that entire peninsula, it's gonna be unlike any other swimming and diving venue anywhere in the world. We are truly going to bring Fort Lauderdale back to the top of its game. Tomorrow morning, I'll be giving the opening speech at the FITC Conference, that's at the Convention Center, that's the International Trades Association that the county has organized, there'll be over forty countries that will be represented there, and every year, I participate in the opening ceremony, so I'm looking forward to that. As Commissioner Glassman indicated, tomorrow's the State of the City address, we'll be highlighting all the activities and successes that we've had this past year and some of the projects that we're working on to give the community an idea of what this commission has been doing in case they can't come to these meetings. On October tenth, I'll, I just wanna announce that there'll be a memorial for the former mayor of Broward County, Ken Keachel, that'll be at the Pride Center at five-thirty, I'll be participating in that. On October eleventh, there'll be a street unveiling for Marsha Pinder, that's at twenty-five oh one Northwest Eleventh Street, that takes place at three PM. At the Galleria on October twelfth is the Eat Your Heart Out Benefit, I imagine that's a lot of food, so, but it's also recognizing a number of community leaders in our city. October thirteenth, the Realtors Annual Mayor's Breakfast is taking place in Deerfield Beach, I'll be participating in that, as well as the White Cane Organization here in Fort Lauderdale, that's folks who are legally, excuse me, who are visually challenged, and I'll be providing welcoming remarks here in our downtown. Also, on October fourteenth, aside from my milestone birthday, there'll be a Winterfest launch party, I invite anybody who wants to attend, it's at six PM at thirty-three South Ocean Boulevard, right? Yeah. So, we've talked about the Water Garden, this other issue's been resolved, I was told to talk about the over two hundred potholes that are, that we have still yet to fill in our city. I can tell you, half of them are on Fifteenth Avenue where I live. I think it's like driving with down, it's like driving down with moguls in the street. But anyway, it's been a great meeting tonight, thank you, we got it early and eight-twenty, so we're not done yet. I know, I know. But I just wanna thank everybody for, especially our Public Works Department, for all their efforts in trying to resolve the matter at the Water Garden. I know that wasn't the easy thing, and with all this rain and all the neighbors in the southern part of our city who suffering from PTSD with all the flooding that's taking place, I mean, it's just, it's just, we just can't get ahead of it, and this rain just, fortunately, I understand the weather is that, said that the next week will be pretty dry, but, you know, I know we're making our best efforts to move forward on the stormwater projects, but, you know, it's just, it's just very, very difficult for so many of our families here to have to deal with that and suffer from it and loss of property, and it's just, anyway, I know our Public Works Department is doing its best and I appreciate all the efforts that you're doing. Okay, with that, Mr. City Manager, do you have any further business for the conference meeting?
Yes, so PD continues to move and establish at their new temporary offices at fifteen fifteen Cypress Creek Road. The public may still access police services at thirteen fifty Broward Boulevard on Tuesdays and Wednesdays from nine to five. We're still setting up on the north end to also attend the public, we're not ready there yet. Tomorrow also, I've been invited to welcome firefighters that are coming from across the globe for a training conference, that's gonna happen in Embassy Suites, and they're coming here for the FTO, sorry, for the Fire Training Expo. And Mr. Mayor and Commissioners and Vice Mayor, we recognize that we're experiencing new weather patterns and couple that with king tide, you know, which are higher than usual, this week was much higher than usual. So this requires us to look at different strategies for resiliency. Just wanna highlight, yes, Public Works in the past days deployed a variety of resources and attended the flooded and haunted streets. Director Dodd will be coming back in November at a conference to discuss new strategies for resilience. I also wanna report about the one-point-two-million-dollar fraud scam, it's still under heavy investigation. We're very grateful to our police department staff and other law enforcement agencies that are following up with good leads in order to return the money back to the city of Fort Lauderdale, and that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Spence, you have a report.
Yes, Commissioners, the resolution that appointed me as interim provides for a salary as a deputy city attorney once that term as interim concludes. It also provides for an adjustment, adjustment for intervening wage increases as of that time period. I'm kind of in an awkward situation in that my anniversary date was in July, and as the interim city attorney, I can't really rate myself, but given the high praise that I hear from the commission, if you all don't have an objection, I'd like to give that the deputy city attorney is three percent.
Retroactive?
No, as of the time.
Well, I don't mind retroactive, I mean, you're entitled to it.
Oh, well, thank you, sir.
We're in conference, so it's a consensus?
Great.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
All right, fine.
Make sure you do a full employee evaluation on yourself, though.
Shortcomings, you know, opportunities for improvement.
I'll probably provide you, no, no.
Any further business to the commission?
Have a happy birthday, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
This conference meeting is now concluded.